We'll call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Joe Burna of Bethel Baptist Church, and he will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Would you just, would you bow with me for prayer? Heavenly Father, first, we want to thank you for your love and your goodness toward us. We thank you for your presence in our personal lives and in our council and in our town amongst the people. We thank you, our Father, that you have granted us a peace that seems to evade other cities that are going on in our country. And so, we ask that you continue to bless us and guide us and guard us as well as the council as they lead us. Help those, especially those that have been re-elected, our Father, to acknowledge your greatness and goodness in their own personal lives. And that it is only because that you have granted them your wisdom that they're able to lead this town in a way that honors you and honors the people of our town. And so, Father, we thank you for that. We pray that everything that is done in this place tonight would be done in a manner that brings honor and glory to you that is pleasing in your sight. For this is our prayer in Christ's name, and everybody say, "Amen." Would you say the pledge with me, please? Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Pastor. Did it make the phone not? It is now, Mayor. It is, okay. Doesn't sound like it.
First item, our next item is roll call. Diane.
Mayor Skook.
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Present.
Councilwoman Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall is absent this evening. Councilmember Nye.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, scheduled announcements and presentations. Yavapai College Community Outreach, Dr. Penny Wills. Dr. Wills, welcome. Good to see you.
Wow, thank you, thank you. First of all, I love it. That's it. Okay. Now, are these, by chances, are those some of the dogs that were up at our place at the Prescott campus with, anyway, we've trained all the canine management dogs for the police and the Air Force this last summer. It was wonderful. Do not try to pet them. I learned that. But anyway, I just first want to, before I give my presentation, I know your time is very precious, but I also want to thank you. First, I want to congratulate all of you. Elections are hard, and I was very happy that night. So, congratulations. Two, one of the best things that I do, and one of my selection is on boards, is with PVEDF, the Euroeconomic Development Foundation. And I can't tell you, this group has stood the test of time. The executive director is marvelous, he's visionary, he's producing, it's wonderful. You might have to write a little bit more on that check because our membership is moving. And this is the community, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, that is always connected, my dots, which is education, dot-dot-dot, regional economic development, dot-dot-dot, quality of life. You get it. And I am just so pleased to work with you. So, I just wanted to thank you. As you know, YC's vision is that Yavapai College makes our communities a premier place, again, back to those dots, to learn, work, and live. And tonight, I just want to give you a brief summary of what we're up to, because I think we've got real proof, not just in words, but in actions. As you can see, you should by now have this publication, I think it was sent to you electronically. I don't like to read that much on computers, so I brought copies for you. But there's just a few things here that I wanted to point out. One of the things is that the board expanded their vision this last time. We've been working a lot with the Verde Valley, which is great, and trying to understand their needs, et cetera. But the board decided to go and suspend that, to say, "We've got to look over the whole county and look at low-income poor. How do we go ahead and meet their needs?" Is there very, very, we, here's a community college that is one segment in higher education that truly has, and honestly has, an office of admissions and not of rejection. How do we bring people in and focus on their exit standards? And we do that in multiple ways there. And even tonight, you'll be the first to know out publicly or in the public, we just received a major, major grant, an NSF, National Science Foundation grant, with Arizona State University and four other community colleges, where nine students in our pre-engineering who are low-income will get $1,000 scholarship every year and almost be guaranteed engineering, you know, degree through ASU, through their College of Engineering. I think that speaks well to our mission, it speaks well to the board, and it speaks very well of our staff, that we are all working together to get this thing moving. But that's just one example. The other thing in this booklet here, if you, and you'll see it in the next booklet, we have over 130 majors. Now, as a first-generation college student, I was faced, when I went to University of Cincinnati, with a lot of majors, and I said, "Oh, my God, what do I want to do?" And you're faced with that, and what we're doing is saying, "Hold on, forget the 130. Yeah, you can dream about that, but we're going to put you in about five buckets. Do you want medical and health? Do you want the performing arts? Do you want business?" Et cetera, those type of buckets. And then, we are aligning our programs, and each one of these, and what we call pathways, it's a national movement, but it has two major components. One, the courses, as you go into that broad area, and think of it as a funnel, and you go into, "Oh, I want to go into medical. I think I want to be a nurse, but right now, I want medical." And then, you find out, and you take your foundational courses that will transfer into all these different ones that are up here in that 130. And you find out that you, like me, can't stand the sight of blood. Nursing is not probably for you. But you want to stay in the medical field. And so, how do we move you over into medical assistant or medical coding, et cetera, whatever, to be able to be in that field? As opposed to, "Oh, my word, now I'm just going to sort of fish around and see where I'm at." We're doing that, but the second part of pathways is to make sure our support services don't just focus on the beginning, like admissions, financial, it takes them all the way through, all the way through, through placement, resume writing, et cetera, but also that support services, because our students can be pretty fragile. Many of them have two to three jobs, part-time jobs. Many of them are first-generation like me, and they may not understand how a college works, et cetera. And how do we go ahead and deal with that community college version of the sophomore slump? Little things can happen. What I'm very proud of our students is a group of students have gotten together, I don't know of any other community college in the nation that has done this, a group of students have gotten together and formed a philanthropic club called IMYC. IMYC is getting money from faculty and staff, I'm, well, I got caught in two, to raise money, not only from the faculty and staff, but from fellow students for emergencies for these students, to say, "Hey, how can we help you?" Because our students, a tank of gas, that may stop their college, to their rent payment, to whatever. And we're working with that. But students are doing that. To me, I'm most inspired by our students, that they are willing to give back. So, what great citizens they'll be. When I look at PV in this section here in the booklet, as I said, actions speak louder than words, our board, I don't know if any, I thought some of them were going to be here tonight, but I don't see them, but anyway, if you're out there, no, but our board was courageous in not only in the budget for this year, back when they approved it in May, to go ahead and say, "Yes, we want that extension onto the PV center here, where NARDA, et cetera, is there. That is for Allied Health." And to go ahead and start that Center for Excellence that we talked about before. But we also found that things are moving very quickly, which is typical of community colleges. Northern Arizona University, Rita Chang and I have been working on things, but our staff have been working even stronger to say, "What can we do together? And how do we bring that in?" Starting, I believe, in fall, may even be as close as January, we will start the BSN program with NAU, three-year, so that they can do that right along with it. But our board, and I want to thank very publicly Laura Lee, Laura Lee in the stock, you should have brought the dog up, Laura Lee and Mayor Skook for coming up all the way to the Verde campus to show your support for that. And the board did vote unanimously to go ahead and allow us to build that second floor. So, you're going to have another two-story building here in PV, right there. We will do the shell, and then, because things are moving so quickly, we will have that space available to be able to help and bring more programs here. So, I'm real pleased with that. And so, that will start in December. It's moving, I just left a meeting for that back on the campus here. Also, partners with JTED. JTED's already moved in with us at CTEC. That's able to save them money for their lease payments, et cetera, but their classes will be right over here in Allied Health. And I can't say enough, Bradshaw, boy, we need those students, those students need that training that's there. So, that's what I have. Now, the second one, I must tell you, last night, I was in Camp Verde. And we distributed this booklet. It's nice, isn't it? But I need to clarify something. As you looked at that, and one person said, "I didn't know you had George Clooney's wife enrolled." Amal, Amal is not one of our students, nor, since it's in the news with Brad and Angelina, Angelina has not been hired as our faculty member. So, these are our students, but I looked at it, I went, "Oh, my word." And when they said, "When did, when did Amal Clooney get enrolled?" So, I just wanted to clarify, but this is our new view book that goes out to all the students, potential students, et cetera. I'm particularly proud of page five, because this is a student that I advise as a student group, the Bucky O'Neil Society, which is, again, a philanthropic giving back, and they do service. And just so proud of those students, and they have to show leadership already, and then we get them and more involved, and they give back to the communities. So, that is your community college. Glad to be here. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
We better ask the dog.
I think you answered everything. Hey, we really appreciate that.
Okay.
And we had a copy of your report with our packet, too.
He's got a question, Mayor. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is Life Saving Award. Chief?
He agrees. Jake?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you tonight to recognize Officer Jake Mathis with a Life Saving Award. And so, for everybody's information, the Life Saving Award is awarded to recognize the actions of department personnel that result in a saving or prevention of human life that otherwise would have been lost without the employee's direct involvement. The facts of this case were, on August 13th, 2016, at approximately 7:18 a.m., Officer Mathis was dispatched to assist the fire department regarding an 84-year-old male involved in a bicycle accident at the intersection of Cloud Cliff Pass and Lucky Draw Trail in the Stone Ridge subdivision. While en route to the call, Officer Mathis was advised by, oops, advised by dispatch that the male subject was now completely unresponsive and not breathing. Officer Mathis continued to the scene as quickly as he could. Upon arrival, he observed an elderly male subject, later identified as John Forte, lying on his back in the intersection with his distraught wife standing over him, as a civilian bystander was performing chest compressions. Officer Mathis, who he himself has extensive EMS training and experience, immediately relieved the civilian and then began continuous cycles of CPR on Mr. Forte. At this time, fire personnel arrived on scene, however, due to Officer Mathis's EMS background and his expertise, fire personnel had him continue performing CPR on a patient, which then allowed them the ability to perform other advanced EMS procedures on the victim. Officer Mathis conducted repeated cycles of CPR on Mr. Forte until the ambulance crew arrived on scene. After completing eight full cycles of CPR, Officer Mathis was relieved from performing CPR by the Lifeline ambulance personnel. But then, he, Officer Mathis, then assisted both fire and ambulance personnel in placing Mr. Forte on a gurney and preparing him for transport to the hospital. The victim was transported by Lifeline ambulance to Yavapai Regional Medical Center campus for more advanced care, as his health condition was probably responsible for the accident where he fell off his bicycle. Officer Mathis responded to YRMC for follow-up, where he was advised that Mr. Forte was currently sustaining healthy vital signs in the emergency room, was breathing on his own, and it was later reported that Mr. Forte became fully responsive on his own, waking up in his hospitality room, and was able to interact with his wife and medical staff. Officer Mathis's performance exemplifies the type of individual who serves this community every day, and it's a credit to him and the Prescott Valley Police Department, as well as the entire law enforcement profession. For his actions, Officer Jake Mathis is presented with a department Life Saving Award. This is a plaque commemorating your Life Saving Award. This is a written account of the incident and your award, and finally, the envelope, ribbon for your uniform. Congratulations, Jake, well deserved.
Thank you, sir.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I congratulate you for your efforts in life-saving skills. And I live in Stone Ridge, and we're known for a lot of response in Stone Ridge, but I think it's actually been reduced. And one thing I did notice was that rather than just have the fire and then the ambulance, I've actually seen squad cars respond as well, and they're usually the first one there. So, it does help quite a bit, and we thank you.
Good. Mayor, you got a comment?
Well, as always, you know, I appreciate what you do every day, and especially in this part, where you give people another day. And I always wonder where we would be without the police staff and the community that we have today. And I don't take any of it for granted, and none of us should, so I just want you to know that. Appreciate all of you, especially how you helped another man live. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, this is another great example of the work that our police department does, and the fact that you're so ready to, all of you, so ready to be involved with the community and to help where you can. And we do certainly appreciate it, as we appreciate all of the work of every member of our police department. So, thank you very much.
Laura?
I'm never, ever surprised at the quality of excellence. And I know you personally had to be delighted at the outcome. And we're so fortunate here. We have very few citizens that don't recognize that. The majority of them are so relieved to be living in this community, and they enjoy the safety factor for themselves and their family that you provide. Commendations are never enough, but we're glad you're getting one.
Marty?
Once, once again, one of our police officers shows that the training comes through. But beyond the training, you also have to have that dedication. I know, having gone through a CPR class, I know what the commitment is when you take the CPR class, but actually putting into play sometimes is not always the easiest thing to do. So, you know, in this situation, thank you is never enough, you know, it's just great that we have the officers who have this kind of training, and, you know, once again, we have an officer that, you know, above and, well, not above and beyond, but you've done actually what we expect you to do, and it's commendable. So, thank you.
Chief Edelstein? No comments? Anything else, chief?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Officer Mathis, what have you got to say in your defense?
Why don't you introduce, why don't you introduce your family, sir, tonight?
Is that family, introduce your family, by all means.
So, I have with me today my wife, Rachel, my mother, Karen, and my mother-in-law, Kathy. They're all here to support me, so, and my wife has been a fantastic support. She, we, we met each other back when I was working for Lifeline, when I gathered my experience as an EMS provider, so she's been very supportive for me through, through my EMS certification and all that, and once I became a police officer, luckily, I was able to put that to use that day, so.
Well, we sure appreciate having you on our side. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Well, move on to the next one, which is retirement of Officer David McNally. And I, I don't think he asked us if he can retire. Are we going to let him do it, chief?
I suppose. Well, we go from one extreme to the next. Tonight, this one, I come before you tonight to recognize Officer David McNally on reaching the milestone of 20 years in law enforcement, and to congratulate him on his retirement from the Prescott Valley Police Department. Officer McNally served in the United States Marine Corps from 1996 to 2000, and upon completion of his military obligation, he began his career in law enforcement and attended the ninth class of the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy. After graduating, you'll see why that comes into play in just a minute. After graduation, he started his career with the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office in August of 2000. Operated as a patrol deputy until 2004, when he decided to come work for a real department, I mean, for the Prescott Valley Police Department. Since he's been with us during his 12 years with us, he has worked in many different areas. Aside from being a patrol officer, he's been a member of the department SWAT team for several years. He also served on the department's uniform committee and was the treasurer for the Police Officers Association. Since the beginning of his career, he's always shown a passion for the canine unit. That's why the dogs. In 2008, Dave tested for, when he was assigned to the canine unit, where he partnered with a Belgian Malinois named Ike. Dave worked in many ways as a canine officer, to include assisting on SWAT operations, pant on numerous occasions and investigations. He trained canine officers from other agencies and assisted our patrol officers in their work. In the course of being a canine handler, Dave has had two canine partners, Ike and another Belgian Malinois named Jake. Dave has been a great asset to the Prescott Valley Police Department, a great resource to his fellow officers, and a proficient and competent canine handler. Dave has been married to his wife, Veronica, since 2011. Veronica has a huge support, has been a huge support for Dave since they have been married, and he also has two stepdaughters. All of us at the police department wish Dave the best in his retirement and future endeavors, and we ask that the council do the same. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with Veronica, you have 20 minutes.
I could use that whole.
Use the microphone.
I could use that whole 20 minutes, but all I really want to say is thank you to the families out here, all of you who have supported and embraced Dave through every endeavor, and I am so proud of you, and one lucky girl.
Thank you, Veronica. Counsel, have any comments, anyone? Laura?
Oh, Dave. Well, we've had some fun times together. I'm going to get choked up, and I'm going to pretend I'm coughing. It's really hard to have so many of you retiring, because I don't know how to do that, and that's pretty obvious. But Dave, you've been through the good, the bad, and the ugly of what life is, let alone what it is for a law enforcement officer. You made this town a better place for all of us to be in, and I don't want you to lose sight of that in your retirement, okay?
Laura, you're too young to retire, anyway. 39 is way too young. Marty?
Yeah, I've known Dave several years. Again, I first met him when I was through my affiliation with the Prescott Valley Police Foundation, and there wasn't an event that doesn't happen in Prescott Valley where we didn't have the canine officers come down and do a demonstration, either National Night Out or some of the other big events that we have around town. So, I got to know Dave a little bit, and, you know, congratulations on your retirement. Hopefully, you have bigger and better things planned for your future. And again, another exemplary officer of the Prescott Valley Police Department, you know, and we're going to miss you, you're going to be missed a lot, and I'm sure the canine unit will be missing you. So, anyway, congratulations and have a good rest of your life.
Mary?
Oh, I just wish you the best in your retirement. I'm actually kind of jealous that you're going to retire, and I'm still, but anyway, I think it's fabulous, and I appreciate your service to the community and all that you've given. And I can tell that one of the canines over there appreciate you too, because he's had a lot to say. So, but God bless you and your family, and, and the years ahead, whatever God's got planned. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, just wanted to, Lynn, my congratulations on your retirement. I think it is unusual, we usually see a lot of the officers come and take another 20, so I'm kind of put back. But we know you're going to do bigger and better things, you'll be missed, and just like we heard before, I think every place I've been, I've seen you, you're with a dog, so I don't know how that's going to play out in the future, but hopefully, you'll have a canine with you at your side as well. But congratulations.
Edelstein, any comments?
Dave and I have worked together in a lot of different capacities, most recently, since I made it to executive staff, I've seen Dave in a couple of roles where I think he showed real exemplary courage. There were a few SWAT scenes that he was on with his canine, where that canine made a huge difference, as well as in patrol. And I think that your service to this community definitely protected it quite well, but also protected our officers in several situations, so good job.
Chief, any additional comments?
No, Dave, did you want to say something?
McNally, any comments? Anything in your defense?
Well, I'm looking forward to retirement, because my parents couldn't even make it today, because they were at a comedy show in Laughlin, so if that's what retirement's like, it's good to know where your priorities are. But my, my blue family never let me down, so.
Good, well, thank you so much.
So, we do have a couple of presentations. We'll start with the shadow box. This is to commemorate and try to summarize your 20 years of service. You're going to need more hands. I got more stuff here for you. This is a plaque, and it says, "An appreciation presented to Officer David McNally for all your years of service and dedication to the Prescott Valley Police Department and the town of Prescott Valley." And then, finally, we're going to present you with your retirement badge, and then, Kristy said, "Come over," and she'll get you whatever wallet you want.
Congratulations, man. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month 2016. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels, domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year. At least one in three members of our community have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas our coordinated community effort will help put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for our community to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now, I therefore, Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all of our citizens to work together with one goal in mind: to eliminate domestic violence from our community.
Laura, any comments?
We're so lucky that we have a group of dedicated law enforcement officers, and we have staff right here that are making a difference every single day in the lives of individuals touched by this horrible thing called domestic violence. And I want this young lady, Rachel, to make an announcement about October.
All right. I wasn't prepared for this. So, as was stated, October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Prescott Valley PD, the Family Violence Unit, which I am a part of, and the Coordinated Community Response Team, which is a team of members from all disciplines in the community across the county. We work every year to put on this awareness event. It's called Take Back the Night. We'll be hosting that here on the plaza, October 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we would love to have anyone in the community who wants to just come out and show support for victims and show support for those people who are working in the various disciplines to help put an end to domestic violence in our community. There's going to be a featured speaker, a survivor speaker, a couple of them. And we will also do candle lighting and a march around the Civic Plaza. And come on out.
And the building will be purple.
And the building, yes. And this year, we're adding purple twinkle lights to Lakeshore. We're gonna try to have from one end of the Civic Center to the next lit-in lights. The facilities are working on that every day as we speak, so hopefully, we're gonna be bringing a lot more awareness to our community about this. But we'd really like to have as many community members as we can show up at this event this year. So, if you can make it, even for part of it, it would be greatly appreciated. So, if you have any other questions, you can contact us.
You'll be inspired by it.
Yes, you will.
But don't light your candles in the building. The fire alarm goes off.
No, we'll be doing them out on the plaza. Okay.
We want to thank you for your good work. Keep up the good work. And put an end to domestic violence.
I love what I do, so...
Good. Any more comments?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay. Counsel, have any comments, communications, anyone?
Yeah, actually, I have a couple. I just want to put a reminder out there. October 21st and 22nd, the Prescott Valley Police Foundation is having their murder mystery dinner. You could actually go to the Prescott Valley Police Foundation's Facebook page. All the information is out there. If not, you could contact me, and I'll give the information. It's a $50-a-plate dinner. There'll be a silent auction. And this will be the sixth year, I believe, that we're doing this. And it's usually a very, very good show. There's a lot of audience participation when we do these. And it's a lot of fun, and everybody has a good time, and it's a good fundraiser for the police foundation. For those of you that don't know what the police foundation does, we do fundraisers to raise money for items for the police department that are not in their regular budget. So, we sit down with the chief and his executive members, and they tell us what they need and how much money they're gonna need, and we provide it as much as we can. The other thing is November 12th is the first night of the Northern Arizona Suns game. This is gonna be a big celebration. And I had a conversation today with someone from the Northern Arizona Suns. They want to have special nights and special events, and one of them is gonna be a singles night. So, for all singles out there, December 14th, it's a Wednesday night. It's a 6:30 game. So, more details will be coming. We discussed it today initially. And so, hopefully, we'll be seeing a lot more out of that. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Any other comments? If there be no other comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired on a specific item, it will be removed from the consent agenda and handled separately. This includes the approval of the September 8, 2016, regular council meeting minutes, approving the council selection committee minutes of September 1st, 2016, approving the payment to the Arizona Department of Revenue for $86,004.15 for administration and collection assessment fee for fiscal year 1617. That's due to a new law laid on us. D is approving the monthly department reports, approving the monthly financial reports, approving the council investment report, approving reversionary plat, RP 16-003, Dana Court Condominiums, approving reversionary plat, RP 16-004, Jake Investments, approving renewal of IGA contract with Arizona Department of Housing for manufactured mobile homes, approving the purchase of hot-melted crack sealed materials for the fiscal year 1617, CraveCo Incorporated, in the amount of $76,208.13, accepting the public utility easements for Orchard Ranch RV LLC and the Fairgrounds RV LLC, approving the intergovernment agreement with Yavapai County Flood Control District for the Viewpoint Flood Plane Channelization Project, approving the payment of Open Gov Incorporated in the amount of $13,325 per year for the next three years, and approving accounts payable. A good number of these, we have already studied. Anyone want to pull anything, or do you want to approve it as a whole? Laura?
Move to approve as a whole.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Would you call a vote, Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting has voted yes.
Yes.
So, that passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. We'll move on then to number 9A. Consideration of reading ordinance number 818 by title only for the second reading for zoning map change, ZMC 5-004, for talking glass apartments. With that, I would ask the town clerk to read ordinance number 818 by title only for the second reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 818, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending town zoning map to change the zoning classification of an approximately nine in 5,500-acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Main Street and Florentine Road from C-2 pad, commercial general sales and services planned area development, to RS pad, residential and services planned area development zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone got any questions? If not, shall this ordinance pass? You want to call a vote, Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Passes. Thank you, Diane.
Yes, it does.
Okay, move on to number 9B. Consideration of reading ordinance number 819 by title only for the second reading for zoning map change, ZMC 16-004, for Crown Point Lofts. With that, I ask the town clerk to read ordinance number 819 by title only for the second reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 819. An ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map to change the zoning classification of an approximately three in 8,700-acre parcel located in Track C of the Glassford Regional Marketplace between East Market Street and Crown Point Drive from C-2 pad, commercial general sales and services planned area development zoning, to RS pad, residential and services planned area development zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Okay, with that, I ask, shall the ordinance pass? Would you do the vote, Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall is absent this evening. Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Yes. Yes.
Passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we've got to number 9C. Consideration of reading ordinance number 820 by title only for a second reading of zoning ordinance number 16-002 for short-term rentals. With that, again, I would ask the town clerk to read ordinance number 820 by title only for the second reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 820, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Vacation Rentals, Short-Term Rentals, and declared by Resolution Number 1974 to be a public record, amending Articles 13-02 Definitions, 13-06 Use Regulations, and 13-24 Off-Street Parking Requirements Minimum in Chapter 13 zoning to conform with changes in state law, providing that all of the chapters, articles, and sections of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. With that, I ask, shall the ordinance pass? You want to count the vote, Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Councilmember... Vice Mayor Anderson, excuse me?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
And Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. We'll move on to new business for review, comment, and their possible action. A10A is consideration of appointing Marion Rado... Do I pronounce that right? To the Arts and Cultures Commission. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. One position on the Arts and Culture Commission became open when Suzanne Dusky resigned effective June 27th, 2016, at term end. Ms. Dusky was first appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission on January... Makes sense. October 9th, 2008, to fill an existing term, and then reappointed to two more consecutive terms, with the last term with a renewal date of June 27th, 2016. The vacancy was advertised, and two applications were received. Myself, councilmembers Laura Lee Nye and Mary Mallory conducted the interviews and were recommending the appointment of Marion Rado... And I probably pronounced that incorrectly, to fill the vacancy made by Suzanne Dusky's departure. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Nye.
Well, I want to make sure that everyone knows that we had more than one person interview for this position. And, boy, were we blessed. We are just always overwhelmed with appreciation at the quality of people who come forward to serve this community. And you're no exception at all. So, we're going to make it official tonight, and we just welcome you, and we're delighted to see the spark and energy you're going to bring to this commission.
Mary, any comments?
Well, I do appreciate that your involvement in the community, and I know that you have a lot to add to it. And I'm excited to see what the future holds. So, thank you, Marion, so much.
Marion, any comments? You want to pull the microphone to your...
First of all, I miss the dog.
Oh, the dog.
He was such an entertainment. I'm thrilled to be asked to join the commission. I believe I have a lot to contribute because of my life exposure to music and art. I've already contacted several people who would like to, excuse me, lecture on art and do samples of what they're talking about. Also, music. Jazz pianist, for example, a very renowned jazz pianist, Louis Landon. He's originally from New York City. He said, "I'd love to come and lecture and play." So, I've already made several contacts for things to happen, and I'm really excited about that.
That's exciting.
We are so pleased to get to your qualifications to apply. And now, we'll find out if anybody wants to make a motion to make it official.
Oh, yes. Mayor would like to make a motion to appoint Marion Rado?
Rado, yes.
Okay. To the Arts and Culture Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 27th, 2019.
I'd be happy to second that.
We have the motion as second. Diane, would you call the vote?
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember... or Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. We really appreciate that. Okay, we move on then to number B. Consideration of approving the professional service agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated in an amount up to $74,905 for the Section 2 Sewer Upsizing Project, CIP Number W390. Neil?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you've said, you have in front of you a professional services agreement with Civil Tech Engineering. We're looking to upsize a sewer line that runs across Section 2, which is the area roughly between Granville and the intersection of Cattle Track and Viewpoint Drive. It's about a mile-long stretch of the pipe that we're going to increase in size from 12 to 18 inches, which is in line with what our master planning and sewer model show needs to happen. When Granville constructed their sewer lines and tied on, they actually installed an 18-inch line down what is the Santa Fe Loop alignment. So, they tied an 18-inch line onto a 12-inch line, which connects to an 18- or 24-inch line downstream. So, we have a smaller section in between right now. So, they've done their part, and we just need to upsize our piece in the middle. And so, we haven't budgeted for the actual construction this year. This is only for the design work. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, anyone?
I have no. I have none.
No questions? I think, Neil, we understand this one. It's a great job. Mike?
You want a motion?
You want a motion?
Yeah, we're ready. I guess we're ready, no questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve professional service agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated in the amount of up to $74,905 for Section 2 Sewer Upsizing Project, CIP number W390.
Will it second, anyone?
I'll second.
We have a second. Diane, would you call the vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Neil, go for it, it's a good one. Okay, move on to number C, consideration of approving professional services agreement with Granite Basin Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $85,000 for the Victorian Estate Waterline Project, CIP W391. Neil?
All right, well, you know, I was doing a sewer project, so I also have to do a water project, 'cause otherwise, it wouldn't be fair. So, we are seeking design services to replace a water line which runs essentially from where crossroad stops and continues down Highway 69 in front of Victorian Estates, and including all the way down to our service connection where we provide water to Diamond Valley, and also Bradshaw Water Company is right in that area. This water line has been in the ground for a number of years, and we typically have to do a repair on it once or twice a year, and it is the only main going down in that area. So, when we have to shut it down, potentially, people are without water until we're able to get it back on for them. So, we'd like to go in and put in new pipe, new material, hopefully something that now will have a new life of maybe 50 years, and we would like to engage Granite Basin Engineering to do that design work for us for $85,000. Unlike the sewer project, we are, we did in fact budget $440,000, so this would be the design phase for $85,000, and then we anticipate putting this one out for bid as soon as all the documents are ready and we've approved the design, to start into construction probably in the springtime.
Questions, anyone, comments?
I just wanted to say that I'm always delighted when we do proactive work, and I didn't realize that it could be as long as 50 years, so that's even better news. And how old is that line, again? Do you even know?
I don't know the, I don't know the exact time.
'Cause it was before us.
It was, I mean, yeah, it's probably 30 years old or older, and the pipe, obviously, pipe materials have gotten better over the years with, you know, ductile iron pipe being a very good type of pipe, PVC, or even high-density polyethylene. The type of pipe that's in the ground is asbestos cement, you know, and they do work, and they work well, but after a while, you do need to replace them.
That was put in in the mid-'80s with the Arizona Corporation Commission, when Shamrock Water extended it out there to go ahead and, per an agreement, serve Diamond Valley.
But, any other?
Lot of residents are gonna be happy.
If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion.
I guess. If there's no questions, we're ready.
I'll motion, I'll make a motion to approve the professional service agreement with Granite Basin Engineering Incorporated to provide professional design and construction administrative services in the amount of $85,000 for the Victorian Estates Waterline Project, CIP number W391, by voice vote.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you do the vote, Diane?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Neil, go to work on that, too. Good job, thank you. Okay, we're on D, consideration of approving an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the Police Department. Edelstein, oh, Chief? That's fine, no, you go ahead. Edelstein disappeared on us.
Good evening, you're just used to having him come up there instead of me, that's all, I get it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a request to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Phoenix Police Department for Internet Crimes Against Children's Affiliation Task Force. So, the Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force is a program run through the Department of Justice. Phoenix just has been designated as the facilitating agency in Arizona, so the IGA has to be with Phoenix. It's a program that provides grant funding for equipment and training for the prosecution of crimes against children through using the Internet, and it also provides for training for the community. And what it'll allow us to do in particular is keep ahead of, or it will provide financial assistance to us so that we can keep ahead of all the changes in technology as we go forward, and will assist a new detective that I've mentioned recently, who's been trained as a computer forensic examiner. When he has to upgrade all of his equipment, it's very expensive. This affiliation will allow us to be able to have access to that funding, and there's no matches or anything like that. So, it's a good, it's a good arrangement.
Any questions, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question. Is that competitive, and that is, we would compete with other municipalities for that, or not necessarily?
Good question, I don't know. I can't answer. I can find out for you.
But I'm amazed at the technology that's used, and you see, I think especially in the Phoenix metro, 'cause that's where a lot of our news comes from, that they are able to apprehend a lot of perpetrators out there, and I'm just amazed how they do that. It's just, I don't know how they do that, but...
You're more than welcome to come over, and I'll have Detective Philip Machinsky show you what he has and the processes that he uses to extract that type of information. And I will tell you, this is, you know, some people look at rural Arizona, and they go, huh, what do you, what do you need that kind of abilities or capabilities for? And I can assure you that the use of the Internet to commit frauds, especially child exploitation, child pornography, human trafficking, and those types of crimes, is very, very prolific. It's all around, it's becoming probably the number-one rising criminal enterprise in the world, and we are not immune from that, even in Northern Arizona.
Mary, you got a comment? I'm sorry, make something else?
I'm just gonna, I'll take you up on your offer.
Absolutely.
Mary, you had a comment?
I was just thinking about how, you know, over the years, how advanced we've gotten with computers and technology and all of these things, many of these things we didn't have when I was a young child, and as we move forward in this technology, we still have this ability to take something that could be very well-good and used, but we can always make it go bad and go ugly. And that's a shame, that now we have to get more different kinds of laws, or other agencies, or things that we need to look at now. So, anyway, I appreciate the effort and what we need to do to try to keep the criminals at bay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I think it's great that we're able to tap into this resource.
I was.
I think that's a wonderful thing. So, I'm all for this.
Laura?
I'm actually relieved, and there was a statement in our paperwork that is critical to this, and I want to take time to read it. The landscape, as it pertains to the investigation of Internet-based crime, is always changing. That's why this is so important and powerful, on top of the fact that we're going to provide a protection barrier for our most vulnerable. Congratulations, I'm delighted.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, motions, promotions, demotions?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the Phoenix Police Department by voice and electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Diane, would you call the vote?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Appreciate it. Okay, we've gone to number 11, consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Debbie, you got a comment? Come on up. It's good to see you, Debbie.
Wow, this is the second for me, mayor, council, city, town staff. I want to give a shout-out this evening to our, your, Mr. Richard Parker. Monday, I had spent almost three hours calling different agencies. I had a big concern. I was very frustrated, picked up the phone and called Mr. Parker, sent him an email. Within a couple, two, three hours, my concern was, we had some political campaign boards out on our highway out here, and knowing what I know, they were in the right of way, I want to give a shout-out again to Mr. Parker. He was out there that day, the next day in the rain, because we were after a few signs. And I'm just very grateful. Now I know where to go, go straight to you, all of you, and I really appreciate that. So, my shout-out to him and all of you. I also wanted to make another comment. My world is all about serving and candidates, and I've just noticed recently, after some of our candidates wanted to be recognized and voted in to serving to this community, I have seen them nowhere, not here, no council meetings, and it just kind of makes me sad that these people came to us and wanted to serve us, and now we don't see them. So, it goes to show, in front of me, we have the best of the best, because you don't disappear, and you're here, and you give 110%, 20, 30, 40, 150%, and I really, really appreciate that. I wanted to give a shout-out to Kurt and Mary Mallory, Darlene Packer, for what we just experienced here in our own backyards, the healing fields. And with that, I can leave here tonight, because it brought this community together and showed harmony, and peace, and love, and unity. I can leave here tonight and feel safe. Thank you, Chief, for our city streets, and you don't find that today in the nation, and we're very blessed. And thank you for letting me pour out my heart the way I feel about this community. We have a lot to be proud of, and I'm just proud of all of you, and thank you, Mr. Parker. It's campaign time, and we have to be vigilant as a community, and make sure that we're giving the right message, because it's so easy, especially for me, to be mirrored and not get that message out there the way we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Any other comments? Kirk, anything tonight? No? If there's, wasn't that nice? If there's no further comments, then I'll go on to number 12, this is a motion to convene into executive session in order to conduct the annual review and evaluation of the performance of the town attorney, Ivan Legler. The executive session is scheduled pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes, Section 38-431 Oh 3A1, which allows for the discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, appointment of a public officer, employee, or appointee. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recess into executive session.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Give the motion and a second. Diane, do the roll call on the vote.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Mary?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
And Mayor Skook?
Yes.